Would you like to leave us in the pledge?
Yes, ma'am. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna do the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in the front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to individual members of the board or to the staff. Our first order of business this morning is the Villages at Cabrillo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. Superintendent Steinhauser, nice to you all. My name is Renee Castro and I'm the Director for Community Engagement at the Villages at Cabrillo. Good to see you, Ruthie. Letitia, I want to thank Letitia so much for helping us to make today possible. Particularly, I would like to thank Board Member Felton Williams for arranging for this and inviting us today. We're very excited. So, the purpose, we actually have a panel. The purpose of our panel is really to talk about the unique needs of formerly homeless children. We know the district has a lot of programs in place to support these needs and we thought today would be helpful to kind of just talk about it from the range of developmental cycles. So, I'd like each of the panelists to come on up and just take a minute to introduce yourself, starting with Dora Hasildo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, yes, my name is Dora Hasildo. I'm Executive Director of Comprehensive Child Development Services and we are fortunate to be housed at the Villages of Cabrillo. We have a center-based program for children six months to six years of age experiencing homelessness or just recently housed. And that campus allows us to accommodate eighty children at no cost. Prior to this job that I have, I spent eleven years running Children Today, which is another nonprofit organization dedicated to serving children experiencing homelessness as well as children involved with child protective services.
Good morning. My name is Kimberly Crawford Wee. I am the Vice President of Residential Services for Century Housing and I have worked at the Villages at Cabrillo for eighteen years in different capacities. The first ten was with a, working with domestic violence victims and the last eight I've been working with Century overseeing the community development and case management services for the site. Currently, I oversee a team of case managers that work with our residents in permanent supportive housing as well as our Oasis Youth and Family Services Group, which oversees an after-school program, summer camp, and parenting and family activities.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Elisa Nicholas. I'm a pediatrician and I love the school district. We've been working together for many years. The Children's Clinic is celebrating their eightieth anniversary this year. I've been there, I'm not telling you how long. I started very young. And we were very fortunate to not only be in some of your schools and we love being there and Ruth and I had a lot of fun at International, where it's Cesar Chavez, Hamilton, and Roosevelt, which Chris helped us with, but we have been very blessed to be at Century Villages of Cabrillo now for four years. We've grown to become the largest provider of healthcare services to the homeless in Long Beach. Last year, we served over seventeen hundred patients. There are eighteen hundred homeless in the last homeless count by the city's count and there's about six thousand homeless by the school's count. So, we are really trying to address that issue. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But thank you for having us and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We know each other. My name is Claudia Sosa Valdrom. I'm the Director of the Head Start Program. And we actually just started providing services at Bethune, which is at the Villages at Cabrillo. We started our preschool in January, just this year. So, we've been there just a few months. And we did start with our home-based services last year for our infants and toddlers. So, we are quasi-new to the Villages there but we're very happy to be here and we're learning a lot and I think we're also bringing a lot of really good services to the community.
Wonderful. Thank you to all our panelists. As you can see, it's a very august panel and we're very excited to dive in. I wanted to take just a minute just to, many of you, all of you, of course, are familiar with the Villages at Cabrillo. We're on the west side of Long Beach, former Navy housing. The Navy, as all of you know, left Long Beach in nineteen ninety-five. There's about a hundred and four acres that was reserved for public good. Twenty-seven of those acres were reserved to serve the homeless. This was during the tenure of Beverly O'Neill, former mayor. So, since nineteen, about nineteen ninety-seven, close to that, we began serving the homeless, starting with formerly homeless veterans. Now, on every given night, we serve fifteen hundred formerly homeless individuals. Six hundred of them are children at any given, during the course of a full year and a lot of veterans, about eight hundred veterans. So, it's a very diverse community. It's actually a national model. We had Deputy Secretary for Housing and Urban Development visit us last year. She said, "I've been to forty-eight states and I've never seen anything like this. It's extraordinary." And as you can see, with partners like this, I think we do a great job. And of course, our partnership with the district. So, we're gonna start off with Dora Hasildo just speaking about the unique needs of children zero to five with the history of homelessness and we want to focus a little bit on trauma-informed care and that sort of thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee. So, what I thought I'd do today is talk a little bit about the information that informs our practice, our service delivery model. And again, we have been at the Villages of Cabrillo. We were probably the first or one of the first partners there and so we've really had time to think about the type of response that children experiencing homelessness or with histories of homelessness need. So, part of what informs our practice is the understanding that within the first five years of life, the brain develops up to ninety percent and that every experience that children have is wired into the brain and that for young children, the learning and developing environment is basically the adults that care for them. So, it's not the stuff that surrounds them, it's the relationship that they have with their parent or their primary caregiver. So, understanding that the brain develops ninety percent by the age of five and that that development is directly linked to the relationship they have with their caregiver, we know that children experiencing homelessness may not have a caregiver or parent that can be completely present and attuned and focused on their development. So, that relationship often is compromised and it ends up impacting the brain. So, what we also know based on our work with children and research is that about seventy-five percent of children by the time that they're three have developmental delays and that these delays are primarily in the area of impulsivity and speech and that ultimately that leads to behavioral problems. We also know that children come in with poorer health conditions than children who are housed. We know that they have poor nutrition. We also know that they are easily dysregulated and they suffer from extreme emotional distress. And you who are in the education industry know that if children are not emotionally stable and regulated, they're not able to learn. And so, you add nutrition and toxic stress and health concerns to that, you have an understanding of how children are arriving in our programs. What we also know is that schools can be healing places for children experiencing homelessness. We know that all healing for young children occurs within the context of a relationship. And if we make a commitment for our classrooms to be places where children who may have been uprooted during the first five years of life can be rooted, we have a tremendous opportunity to change the brain, to rewire the way children learn, that we have the ability to focus on how to build resiliency. But again, all of that only happens within the context of a healthy relationship with an adult. And so, our service delivery model is primarily focused on making sure that there is a present adult who is attuned to the needs of that child and that that becomes the way that we deliver education equity. We know that not all children need the same thing. We know that in order for children to learn, they must be met where they are and for us and our understanding of, again, how the brain develops and the trauma that children arrive with, we know that the most healing that we can offer is through a relationship with an adult. And so, the other part that I wanted to bring up is this idea of homelessness being a very public experience. And for children, especially children in school-age programs, homelessness is often a secret that they need to keep and that that secret is just for the sake of being like other children. And any approach that we take to offering services to children experiencing homelessness in the school system, in a public setting like the school system, needs to be handled with great privacy and discretion. Again, the focus for us is making sure that children are regulated so that they can learn. And if they're concerned about other people finding out about their homelessness, if they're concerned about being different, that supersedes their need to learn whatever the teacher is trying to teach. And so, that piece of empathy is incredibly important, again, in creating a safe space for children to be able to learn, to develop, and again, to see the adults around them as the relationship that forms kind of the infrastructure for future learning. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're gonna hear a lot of the same things repeated by the panelists but I think it's important. When working with the families at Villages at Cabrillo, I think one of the things I wanted to to make sure you're all aware of is that the school is not alone in this work. We have a team of experts at the Villages at Cabrillo that are working with the children and working with the families on a daily basis before and after school and on the weekends and the evenings. And I really think that the school can be a partner with the Villages at Cabrillo and I think that will help. A lot of what Dora said is true in that if our parents sometimes are not in a place where they can be that stable, caring, responsible adult for the children that are in our classrooms. Instead, it's our case managers, it's my Youth and Family Services staff, maybe it's a coach, maybe it's a teacher, maybe it's somebody that works at the school that can provide that stability for the child. And I think that's the important message that I wanted to make sure that everyone hears and that you'll hear a lot probably from Dr. Nicholas about ACEs or adverse childhood experiences and that they are not a death sentence. That doesn't mean all these bad things have happened to you. You are homeless, you've experienced poverty, you're in a family with, domestic violence has occurred. That doesn't mean that that's your life forever. It means that you have some challenges as a child and that a healthy adult or that healthy relationship that Dora spoke about can help build that resiliency. It can change it. It can balance the ACEs. So, I think that's really what our team works with, the parents and works with the children. We, to try to understand homelessness, it's very difficult because it's a long, sometimes a long history of trauma that the parents have been experiencing as well that brought them to a place like the Villages. And so, our case managers really work with the family as a whole. What is it that they're experiencing right now and what can we do to help? There's often, there's often an opinion that, okay, you're housed, now everything should be fine. And that's not true. We support parents in permanent supportive housing, which means really they don't ever have to leave. They can stay in our apartments forever but they can be provided with that support and they, throughout their time there, we try to work on healing. We try to work on self-sufficiency and increase their income and help with their mental health and case management, that kind of thing. But it doesn't solve the problem just being housed. So, I think one of the things that we always, we always try to understand is that there's more to that story and once they're in housing, they are safe and now we can sort of unwrap what's underneath. And so, a lot of times, some of those behaviors and some of those barriers will come out because they're housed. They've been keeping it all together when they're homeless but when they're housed, sometimes we see those behaviors. And so, for, especially when working with our youth, one of the things that we say is, you know, what has happened to you to make you behave in this way or to feel that way? Not what's wrong with you, not what's your problem, not why are you acting this way? It's trying to understand what has happened to them in their life that has brought them to this point. And that behavior that you see, both in youth and adults, sometimes is anger and violence and some of what Dora was saying, inability to respond appropriately, inability to concentrate and that happens, again, with the youth and the adults. But what we can do is sort of dig deep and say, okay, you're safe. What has happened in your life that has made you get to this point and what can we do to help you? And I think that's where the schools and our case management team can work. And I guess the message that I would like for us to be able to pass down to those that are in the classroom with the children is that looking at those behaviors not as a problem and isolating them from other children and punishing them for that behavior but really taking a moment to say, okay, what has happened to this child that's making them act in this way and how can I help them? And I know that's an impossible feat when there's, a teacher has so many children in that classroom and everybody has a different need but I do think that if we can provide the education and we can provide the support and we're offering that support on our end as well, I think it is possible for the children to succeed in schools. But again, schools are our greatest partner. So, thank you so much.
May I ask, did I hear correctly, we have about eight hundred students living in Villages at Cabrillo?
No, I don't know how, there's six hundred children on-site in an annual year. That includes zero to five though as well, yeah.
Thank you.
It's probably around four hundred, about four hundred that are in the school district.
In our schools?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Do you want us to ask questions now? Or do you want us to wait until everybody's spoken?
Yeah, we actually have ten minutes after two speakers and then we'll open it for two minutes. Thank you, sir.
Hi. We've touched on several of the things. First, I'm gonna talk about some of the health issues and I think we know. You know, this is universal and I think a lot of what we're talking about and the way we interact with the kids and try to understand them, we should treat everybody equally because we don't know what's going on in everyone's life and everybody has had trauma and if we prepare them, even if they're not having trauma now, for their future in the way we do our social, emotional health and well-being and integrate that into the way the physician treats them, the way the teacher treats them, the way the daycare providers teach them, the way the staff at Century Villages of Cabrillo. It's really about not judging, not blaming children or especially their parents and nobody's really touched on the intergenerational nature. So, a little bit about the health. The brain is definitely affected and all those neural connections that Dora talked about, it's really about touching, holding, talking, reading, loving your children and really being present. It's very hard to be present if you're extremely poor. It's very hard to be present if you weren't parented in the way that we all feel we should parent children. So, you know, many times you see people blaming the parents. Well, can you blame the parents that they, you know, for abusing their child or not being present when they didn't have that as a child and when their parent didn't? As a pediatrician, I now question and know that many of my families that have children taken away from them, they were abused themselves as children and their parents were abused as children. So, really taking an intergenerational view and I think many times, many of us judge people and say, why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you coming to school on time? Why aren't you doing your homework? Well, they're living in a garage. They're living on the street. They haven't eaten. Their mother is trying to help them just live. It's Maslow's hierarchy. How can they help them do these other things? So, I think that's extremely important. So, the brain is affected from trauma and adversity and people talked about the ACEs study. It was a study done in nineteen ninety-eight or eighty-eight by Kaiser looking at obese adults who he wasn't really able to help and he started hearing stories. And it's narrow and it was a research study. So, I talk about ACEs, toxic stress, and trauma because I think they're different. They're different but they're similar. So, ACEs is abuse, neglect, physical, sexual abuse, mental illness in the family, in the parents, domestic violence in the home, incarceration of a parent and, what's the other one? Divorce. They don't include death but divorce. And so, they did these scores and they found that people that had a score of four or higher had more both psychological, definitely mental health issues are much higher but they also had increased diabetes, obesity, heart disease and some autoimmune diseases. And so, what they found is that the brain gets affected in the way that you're wired and we, if you have chronic stress, you go into the, you know, every time you're stressed, you go into fight, flight, or freeze. So, the freeze, people don't always think about. And you can think about children and people you know. You say something, you trigger something and they go to a place that is way above what you think should be their reaction and that's because this has happened to them over and over and over again. And you'll think back and many times when we talk about this, people have to leave the room because it brings up their memories. So, when people seem to react in that way, it's not oppositional defiance disorder or conduct disorder many times. It's not ADHD when they're not paying attention. It may be that, you know, they have had a lot of trauma in their life, they are living on the streets, their mother is having issues, they're not sleeping, they're not eating. All those things affect how you can concentrate and in your classroom. And I think that's what's really important for people to understand and also to understand the next generation. If you work with the parents and the parents, I hear people, we pediatricians do it, teachers do it, we blame the parents. Oh, they're not a good parent. Oh, they don't care about their kid's education. We have to stop that and we have to stop and say, what happened to that parent? Every parent wants to love their child. Every parent wants their child to be healthy, happy, and educated. They just don't have the tools. So, as we're designing these systems, both in the entire city, we've been trying to do this, it's really how we all interact with each other, with our parents and with our children. So, the trauma-informed approach is that you, so we'll go into the trauma-informed approach now. I think this is one of the keys to really making a difference in this area is to have everybody really realize the impact of trauma and toxic stress. So, you can, we all have stress. It can be, it goes up. Your cortisol goes up. Your fight, flight, or freeze goes up but it comes down. But if it doesn't come down and it goes back up again, over and over again, that's when you get the changes. And so, that's when you have to really address those issues. So, we realize that some children and families are going through this or have gone through this and they have certain ways that they react to things. You need to recognize the signs and symptoms. The child that is coming in that's been doing very well and then all of a sudden isn't doing well. The child that is the super-quiet child sometimes, that really compliant, quiet child could be a child that has been viewing domestic violence or being sexually abused but they don't have the strength and the size to react and fight back and so they go into their shell. And many times, they're the well-behaved child in the classroom. And then you have the ones that are the ones that are acting out, usually more of the boys but that's the ones that get labeled as difficult kids, bad kids when really they're kids that probably have problems now or have problems in the past or both. So, and then we have to really respond appropriately and resist re-traumatization. So, there are certain things that can traumatize people and people that have been pushed around a lot and you'll see this even in your own staff. I've seen it in our staff. If they've been pushed around and they've survived their trauma, many people have had trauma. Many people survive. They come out very strong. They become leaders. I've spoken all over the place and people come up to me and tell me their stories and you never would have guessed they had that trauma. But sometimes they're triggered But sometimes they're triggered, so they'll react in that way to you. So you have to recognize that and you have to just be understanding and calm and not go back. So I once lectured a group of Parks and Recs staff, all who have jobs, they're holding out jobs, they're doing well. And I said, a parent comes in and is demanding something over and over again, and they're yelling at you, how are you going to respond? And some, one of them went, they're going to fight back. So we have to then calm ourselves. And I think one of the most important things is realizing when we're doing the training and, and teaching, the entire staff needs to be, you know, educated, is that we need to give them skillsets to how to calm themselves first and understand. But I think once you understand that, you'll start recognizing when you're being triggered by something. And then you give them the skillsets for that. So I think, you know, universal trauma-informed approach, universal kindness and understanding and empathy is really the answer. And then recognizing the kids that are struggling more. There are some schools where they have children that are struggling in the classroom. And every day they have a half hour with the same teacher, just playing Uno, or cards, or talking about their life or the football team. And it's that consistent, caring relationship. And I think all of you who have been teachers have seen how that can change a life. And in, in our staff, that consistent, caring relationship with a physician. And just when a mother comes in and a child comes in, you just say, how are you doing? But simple acts by the, you know, crossing guard, by the people on the side, you know, playground, by the office people, by the teachers, everyone. You know, good morning, use their name, how are you doing today? Just being present. And I think we all get caught up checking off the boxes, meeting all the criteria for licensing and audits and this and that. And that human element is sometimes getting lost. And I think bringing that back and realizing that many times what parents or kids are doing, it's not because they're trying to be bad or do things that to annoy us, or, you know, not following our directions. That's what doctors get really mad at. But it's that there's something happening in their life and to approach it with humility and kindness and caring. So I think, I think those are my mains, main points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. So you heard a lot from all of our presenters. They're talking to you about their experiences and their expertise and everything they said. We've, we've known in Head Start and as a new partner at the Villages, we've been reawakened to some of those things. So we went in just in two classes, one preschool and one for our infants and toddlers. And we were having some difficulty getting the children and the families to become enrolled. And we thought, well, you know, we're here, why aren't they coming? And so one of the things that we really had to look at is the families that are living at the Cabrillo Villages don't know us. They don't know who we are. And trust, building trust is very important. So they've had relationships with the counselors there, with the other staff that provide the services. And for us to be really able to be seen as someone or a group that can be trusted was very important for us to learn. And so that's one of the things that we learned. And we know that that's super important in working with families and children experiencing homelessness. So the Villages is seeking to provide trust-based experiences for kids in everything they do, from healthcare, school, and all of the services that are provided onsite for them. And the way that we're trying to do that is through multi-generational approaches, as Dr. Nicholas mentioned, but also multi-systemic and coordinating services. Coordinating services so that they're not duplicated, but that we're building on the trust and relationship that we have with the families and children. And so much that we're now talking about really focusing on the importance of zero to five. Even though we have veterans onsite, we have a lot of adults. And we have about a hundred and fifty children birthed to five out of those six hundred or so that are there. We know that the younger we start, the better chance we're giving them to build those skills of resiliency. And also as we're working with families, we're helping them also develop those resiliency skills. But the other factor is working with the entire community to really focus and take ownership of their responsibility for caring for the youngest children that we have in the Villages. And so today we're also, and I'm sure we all know how important the school is. And Cabrillo High School's right there and Hudson is right there also. And so we want to build that relationship so that the collaboration is more seamless. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Renee.
Board members, at this time, we'd just like to open it up for some Q and A. For, we only, we're going to go till nine fifteen, so about seven minutes. And then we just want to summarize some recommendations we'd like to make at the conclusion. So I'd like to open it for any questions you might have.
If I may, this is fabulous, it's very impressive. And I'm wondering to what extent, Mr. Superintendent, our teachers have this kind of information and in service to, to deal sufficiently with our homeless kids?
Well, I'll address in two ways. The district has approximately 5,000 homeless students because homelessness is a whole spectrum. So you have the most severe, you know, individuals coming from the street, getting housing. And then anyone who's living with another family is considered homeless, so shared residency. So you have kids. So all of our schools, as you all know, under the understandings on U6, work on trauma-informed care, kindness. You see all kinds of good things going on. But James Suarez is our homeless coordinator for the district. So he works directly with Erin, who's back there. And because we provide bus passes and tap cards and all kinds of things for our folks and have for many, many, many years. But as you've heard from our presenters, there's always more that everybody can do because when you have nine thousand employees, you know, everyone's not going to do the same thing on the same day. It's just not going to happen in any of our organizations. And so, but I think it's just really important as, as everything we do is killing those layers back because the great thing about the Villages is that because of the matrix that folks are on, there are different things that people need at different times. And, and, you know, some are going to be short-term, some are going to be longer term. And that's, I think, what they're getting to is how we can coordinate those services for this, for their families. You know, sort of like when we started the clinics, Dr. Nicholas. You know, when we started International, it was, was small, was good and so on. And now if you look at it, you're serving thousands of individuals, but not just our kids, entire families. And, and that was a different mindset than when we first started the initiative. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. First and foremost, I, I want to thank Renee for putting the panel together to better inform us of, of, you know, the, some of the things that are going on at the Village of Cabrillo. And I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to tour the facility with you and all the years that I have visited Bethune and bypassed Villages of Cabrillo. I felt a little awkward not, you know, not stopping by to, but I was really, really amazed at all the things that are going on there. And I want to really encourage our, our board, board members to do a visit, a tour of the facility. On the issue of trauma, I'm, I'm going back and reflecting on, on interviews that we had during my time as dean over at Long Beach City College where we were hiring psychology professor. And all of them had to, to speak to the question of childhood trauma. And how amazed I was at the impact that trauma has on kids. What it does when they're traumatized and how the child reacts to that trauma, that there is a part of the brain that really builds up to deal with the trauma. And sometimes the, the, the increase in activity in that part of the brain stars other parts of the brain from developing, like empathy and things of that nature, or social skills. So you see a lot of those kids who have had that kind of trauma act out in some very direct ways. I mean, and we begin to look at, at cases of kids in certain parts of, of our, of our city who were highly traumatized as kids. And the data show that kids as young as 12 years old who were highly traumatized could easily walk up to another individual and, and, you know, just shoot them without any reaction or, or feelings of, of doing something wrong because of the trauma. And that the trauma can be so extreme that, you know, that child is, is basically, the, the brain just really takes over to protect that child from further trauma. And, and to see the number of kids who are in that situation, not just here in, in Los Angeles, in California, but throughout our country, who have that, that kind of experience growing up. And I didn't realize we had so many of our kids who were in that situation.
I just want to comment on that. I think that's a very good point. I think what's important is that we recognize the trauma early and we address it because healing is possible. It really is. So I don't want our community to feel that if they have a high ACE score or they have had a lot of trauma, that they're broken and, and damaged goods. And I think we have to be very careful about that. I think what's important is to identify those that are suffering or have suffered or are undergoing trauma now as early as upstream as possible. That's why I'm a big fan of early Head Start and early childhood education. And then getting it into the pediatrician's office. We see them like ten times in the first three years, the family, so we can identify things. But healing is possible and they have shown, yes, you have epigenetic changes, yes, you have brain changes, but you can rewire the brain. I don't know if any of you have known anyone who's had a massive stroke and then years later they're able to walk again and talk again. This idea that the brain is, is, you know, wired until six and then it's over, I think any of us over the age of forty realize that's not true. And, and I, as a mother of a disabled thirty-year-old, I know he's still growing and still learning. I had a nineteen-year-old ex-24 weaker the other day that's in the, I think the Long Beach School District, he might be Compton. He's learning to read, he's starting to learn to read at nineteen. None of us would ever dreamt that could happen. So I think we need to identify it early so that we can help those kids so they don't get to the point where they have a gun in their hand and help those parents. And healing is possible, hope is, is, I, I encourage you to look up Jeff Andrade Duncan. He has a talk called Roses Out of Concrete. He works in Oakland, he's an educator. He's amazing, I'd love to bring him here. He's one of the best speakers I've ever seen on this. And now I'm an expert on Tupac Shakur poetry, which I wasn't. People think I'm really hip. But, but I think that hope and the healing and recognizing the trauma, but knowing that we can with all the things we're talking about, we can see people. And will they, will they be triggered even after they've had all this? Yes, they may be, but it'll be different. And when we got our big grant to do this work at the Children's Clinic in 2013, then Police Chief McDonald was there at every step with us. And he said, you know, if we had had this early childhood identification and training, you know, it may have helped the people that become my clients. And I think that's what we have to remember. But it's never too late. I mean, I see moms that have gone through so much and they have their kids back again and they're doing really well because everybody invested in them. They were in, you know, Flossy Lewis and For the Child and Guidance. They've got everybody wrapping their arms around them. And I think they're going to make it this time. And the kids are all doing well in school because they were caring adults, the grandmother, the teacher, the coach, the crossing guard. And that's what's important, that we all have a role in this to help lift up these children and these young adults and, and teens. And we can make a difference. Doesn't mean we become complacent, we have to do something and act as a community, so.
Thank you.
We want to take a moment to just provide some recommendations. And again, thank you so much for taking the time, Felton, Dr. Williams, again for inviting us. I'm going to defer to Dora Hasildo. We have three recommendations for, for you all to kind of summarize our presentation today.
So I'd like to actually just state a couple of things. One is, I think that everyone here has tremendous faith in our school district to be responsive. I, we really do think that we have the rock star of school districts. I know that in a 2015, 2016 school district report, the state of California ranked 48th in planning for children experiencing homelessness out of 50, and 49th in child policy. So I think it's exciting for us because we know that our school district is ahead of the rest of the state. And so we're here to offer again our partnership and our support because we're so absolutely invested in this. And I also want to say that we, that Comprehensive have a motto that kind of touches on everything everyone said. And that's the children are not giving us a hard time, that they're having a hard time. And so it takes us, our experience, out of the picture. And so again, it's something that we have up on our wall. Children are not having, are not given us a hard time, but they're actually having a hard time. So our recommendations are to consider opening the Family Resource Center at Stevens Middle School so that it's accessible to the students at Hudson and Cabrillo. My understanding is that right now there are a number of schools who can access the Family Resource Center there, but that it's not open to Hudson and Cabrillo. So we really would like...
I know Cabrillo's is part of that and I'm almost positive Hudson is, but that's an easy. But Cabrillo definitely is a part of that school.
Wonderful, thank you. The second consideration is to incorporate into the annual staff in-service a segment on working with children who've experienced homelessness or other traumas. Again, we think that there are some very specific things that personnel needs to know about how to support a child who's gone through this experience. And, and I'll share with you, we know that programming that keeps in mind the needs of children experiencing homelessness is good for all children. And that what's good for all children is not necessarily good for children who've experienced homelessness. So I think it's a win-win if we can provide training on trauma-informed teaching, on relationship-based learning, and on how to make sure that children are rooted in their classroom community, especially if they've been uprooted in other, in other areas of their life.
Thank you, Dora. And our, our final request is, is a little bit off-topic, but it, but it is kind of related to quality of life for our children and for our families. As all of you know, we are severely impacted, we're in the diesel death zone. We are severely impacted by truck traffic. There are three million trucks that pass through the 710 and we're right there. So what's happening is south of the Villages, Technology Place, which of course is owned by Cal State Long Beach, that's all trucking now. So, and Prologis, which is a goods movement company, is bringing in a new, brand-new warehouse, 280,000 square feet, 32 truck bays, will be operating 24/7. So on the south side, we're really impacted. So I was discussing with Dr. Williams during our, during our staff visit, if there's a way that we could work with staff to see if we can get ingress and egress paths heading east along Williams, opening up the property just on the south, south side of Cabrillo High School. In your packets, there's some maps there. We also would like to open up a pedestrian walking path, which is not Cabrillo District property, but get your support on that. We're going to be applying for Port of Long Beach grant. So these two paths would be a game changer for our community. Currently, the children, of course, we have a, a joint use agreement with, with the district to open up that gate to Cabrillo High School so our children could access the high school, Hudson and Stevens. But if we have the pedestrian bike path and walk path, that would really improve the quality of life for our children. So it's in your packet. Again, we just would, would love to have, work with staff on that particular issue. Thank you again so much for your time and we're at nine fourteen, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll study that to see what we legally can do on that piece because I've been approached by that a couple of weeks ago.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you Superintendent.
Just a, a, a quick comment on that last, last item. I know that a lot of our students, and I don't know how many exit paths we have for kids who are leaving Cabrillo after school. But with all the kids pouring out of that one exit way up front, there's always been this issue of safety and security with the different groups of kids who are exiting out that one gate. I think if we can open up that particular gate, that will ease some of the, that congestion and add to the safety of the kids.
We'll, we'll look at it.
Yeah. Okay. If I may, may make a comment also. I'm trying to think, if I'm a third-grade teacher, you know, what kind of support I'm getting and dealing with the students? I've got 37 kids and I'm not sure, Dr. Baker, if it would be wise, but I think I'd like to know which of those kids are from homeless situations. Because I think I've heard that you can't treat all kids the same. And if there's some demeanor that I need to have in dealing with homeless kids, I want to learn what that is.
Well, I think that's what we've been hearing from our panel this morning is about being able to have more empathy and, and seeing kids for their humanity and not just taking it for granted that we all come from the same background or that we've all had the same experience.
We're hearing it. I want the teachers to be able to hear it.
Right. And I, and that's one of the recommendations being brought forth is how do we embed that in our professional development? Right. Things that we're already doing, how do we put more of an emphasis on this, you know, you know, trauma-informed behavior and the relation, having more of a relationship-based training for our teachers.
And you don't have to know every detail of every child. And I think the other thing we didn't mention is this is hard for our teachers. And when I've lectured at some of the schools, some of the teachers have just gone into another room and then afterwards talked to me for an hour because it's, they get re-traumatized. So it's important to have like universal precautions and look at those children and those families and realize that they're probably homeless kids in every classroom. So when you ask people to bring in, you know, the, something for some event, they may not be able to do that because they're in a motel, they couldn't even, they can't even afford food. So I think kind of universal precautions and then recognizing when kids are struggling and not, you know, demonizing them, but say something may be happening with them, I think is a safer way to do it. And then if you have behaviors that are concerning, you have an amazing resource in all the mental health providers on all the schools. I mean, it's quite, you know, I talk about Long Beach everywhere I go because I think, so then you refer them in to those, to those experts that they can do, if they need cognitive, trauma-informed cognitive behavioral therapy or PTSD therapy, then they can get into the therapy. Not everybody who's had trauma needs to go into a, you know, a mental health treatment. A lot of that healing happens by the relationships and the caring around them. And then, you know, you follow them and see. So refer, train people to refer when needed, but also have all of us be empathetic, kind, and nonjudgmental and welcoming and knowing that, you know, kids do have different circumstances. But it's got to be, it's hard for the teachers if they know everything going on in their classroom. It's a lot to carry. And, and I think nobody expects them to solve everything, just like the staff at, at Century Villages. You know, we can't expect one doctor or one teacher or one childcare provider to, to solve all the problems of that child and that family and those parents and those grandparents and the intergenerati. But together, we can all support that child and make a huge difference, those relationships. It's really, Bruce Perry's been doing this work for years, it's about relationships, it really is, so.
And I, and I think that's the benefit of having this conversation is, is to, you know, bring attention to the fact that our teachers, the, the people who spend the most time with the kids would benefit from this, you know, trauma-informed training or awareness. And that it's nice to know that we have all these other resources when that's not enough. And now, now we know and we'll make better choices because of it. And I want to thank you all for being here. It's a wonderful way to start our morning, very inspirational. And we're, you know, we're talking about some of the youngest of our students and it's the earliest part of the morning, so it's a great, great way to start the day.
We're all here as resources for you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you very much.